In the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you could join me, I would appreciate it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And it really is one nation under God, not one nation under God. Sorry. I couldn't help that. Okay, so this is a de novo public hearing for board review, public comment, and board action on an appeal of a planning commission decision to deny Elk River property development land use application AD 1705 for the analysis of alternative routes for a pipeline and ancillary facilities to deliver recycled wastewater located for irrigation of the golf course. Today, the board will hold a de novo public hearing for board review, public comment, and action on an appeal of a planning commission decision to deny Elk River property development land use application AD 1705. The application is for the analysis of alternate routes for a pipeline and ancillary facilities to deliver recycled wastewater located for irrigation of a golf course as listed on the properties noted in the staff report. The hearing procedure is outlined on page one of the staff report under the heading of Hearing Procedure. The first item says, "Identify and follow the hearing procedure specified in the zoning ordinance's ordinance 2.1402A through D," which I will go through now. The applicable substantive criteria for the board's review are ORS 215.283 and ORS 215.246. Testimony and evidence received today for application AD 1705 must be directed towards these ORS sections. Fading to raise an issue with sufficient specificity to enable the board and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes an appeal to the land use Board of Appeals. Issues raised in the public hearing must be identified by the close of record at or following the final hearing, either in person or in writing. Any party shall be entitled to a continuance hearing if additional documents or evidence is provided in support of the application. Normally, the zoning ordinance would allow the board to continue this matter for a minimum of 14 days upon request of a party. Because of the timing of the appeal hearing, we will not automatically apply this section of the zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance section 2.120 talks about who constitutes a party for purposes of speaking during the public hearing. It says that to be recognized as a party in an appeal of a land use decision, a person must either have filed the appeal and appeared before the local governing body, either orally or in writing. The board shall first determine that the person is a party before deciding the merits of the issue. The balance of the procedures for the hearing can be found in the Hearing Procedures section on page one of Staff Report, items 2 through 10, and are as follows. The community development director will provide an oral report. The board may ask questions of the director during her presentation, but should save lengthy questions for the board deliberation. The board will then accept testimony from parties in favor of the application, followed by acceptance of testimony from other parties. Each party may offer rebuttal evidence and testimony. The board during its deliberations may direct questions to the parties and to county staff. The board will discuss potential findings and will direct staff to bring back a final order, because there is no final order before the board today. At the conclusion of today's public comments, the board will determine whether to leave the record open to the date when the final order will be reviewed. Staff has recommended the board adopt the final order no later than January 31, 2018. Does the board have any questions?
No matter, Chair.
So I'm going to turn it over to the community development director, Carolyn Johnson, and she will inquire of each board member specific questions regarding conflict of interest and ex parte communication. The community development director will then present an oral report.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Gold, regarding land use application AD 1705, do you have an actual conflict of interest?
No.
A potential conflict of interest?
No.
A direct or substantial financial interest in the proceeding?
No.
The ability to render a fair judgment because of prejudice or prejudgment?
No.
Have you had communication with any party regarding application AD 1705?
No.
Commissioner Boyce, regarding land use application AD 1705, do you have an actual conflict of interest?
No.
Do you have a potential conflict of interest?
No.
A direct or substantial financial interest in the proceeding?
No.
The ability to render a fair judgment?
Yes.
Have you had communication with any party regarding application AD 1705?
Not regarding the application.
Okay. Commissioner Huxley, regarding application AD 1705, do you have an actual conflict of interest?
No.
Do you have a potential conflict of interest?
No.
Do you have a direct or substantial financial interest in the proceeding?
No.
Do you have the ability to render a fair judgment?
Yes.
Have you had communication with any party regarding application AD 1705?
I have to change my answer on that one question, the one before, "Do I have the ability to render a fair..."
Judgment?
Yes.
Okay.
I think I said...
Financial interest in the proceeding?
No.
Do you have the ability to render a fair judgment?
Yes.
Have you had communication with any party regarding application AD 1705?
I have to change my answer on that one question, the one before, "Do I have the ability to render a fair..."
Judgment?
Yes.
Okay.
I think I said...
To render a fair judgment?
Yes.
Have you had communication with any... As part of the DEQ, the DEQ future action, ERCD must show compliance with a number of ORS requirements. And I'm going to back up for a minute, because I just mentioned the evaluation of the DEQ by DEQ and what the board decides to do. This action that you take is not appealable to Luba, and that was an error on my part in preparing your script. I apologize. So, once the board makes a decision, that's where it lays, okay? So, moving on, the first ORS that we're looking at is one that requires applicants to secure DEQ permits for compliance with certain technical requirements. That's number 1A, and it requires the applicant to identify in writing for public comments alternative locations for the pipeline with an explanation as to why other alternatives are not identified. That's why you have these alternatives behind you, these two alternatives. And the applicant will also need to address any comments that were provided by the public today or prior to now, and if or how those work. Regarding requirement number three, the alternatives are identified in the staff report and a little bit ago. Those alternatives can also be addressed in the public testimony today. If public comments are received today that introduce new evidence related to identified these identified alternatives or new alternatives, then the applicant will need to be granted an opportunity to evaluate those, those alternatives that might be new today, that they haven't seen before. Regarding the requirement to secure DEQ permits, if the board, in your final order, when you make a decision on this, authorizes the alternatives analysis, then there would need to be a condition of approval that would require the applicant to secure the DEQ permits that are required. This is fairly common in most applications that you have conditions. That being said, the applicant would then be able to have the proposal meet the requirement of 215.246.1A. ORS 215.246.3 requires an applicant to explain how public comments on the alternatives have been addressed and explain reasons for not using any identified and adequately detailed alternatives. Any alternatives that are proposed by the public, or anyone else for that matter, need to be very clear. They have to make sense, and the applicant is required to address those. I will leave it to them to address those in their testimony today, also in much of the background of the staff report. I think you can see where they have addressed testimony. If the board adopts a final order affirming that the applicant has adequately considered public comments on the alternatives, then the applicant will have satisfied ORS 215.246.3. ORS 215.246.4A allows the treatment of reclaimed water, ag or industrial processed bio-water or biosolids that occur as a result of a land application. ERDC is proposing the use of, for treatment of reclaimed water, consistent with this 215.246.4B authorizes establishment and use of facilities, including buildings, equipment, aerated and non-aerated water impoundments, pumps, and other irrigation equipment that are accessory to and reasonably necessary for the land application to occur on the subject track. The recycled water pipeline that's proposed by ERCD and the ancillary items that they need, the pond, I think there's a small outbuilding, there's a few other things that they can talk about. Those features are consistent with the authorization specified in 215.246.4B. We move on to 4C of that same ORS. It authorizes facilities or transport of reclaimed water if the facilities are within a public right-of-way or other lands subject to the property owner's consent. The alternatives behind you, you can see that the preferred alternative on your left takes you down the public right-of-way, and the other alternative runs over private property. The applicants have secured the consent of those private property owners, and it's included in the stack of information in your board packet. The ERDC pipeline alternatives either use the public right-of-way or are over private property, whichever one is selected by them, and would therefore comply with ORS 215.246.4C. This is one that has received quite a bit of scrutiny and comment, especially by the planning commission, but it says through 215.283.1V, "The following uses may be established in any area zone for exclusive farm use." This area is zoned for exclusive farm use. "Subject to the issuance of a license by DEQ," the applicant is applying for a license, "for the land application for reclaimed water or for irrigation in connection with a use that's allowed in exclusive farm use zone under this chapter." The alternatives for the water pipeline for irrigation that's proposed can be established over EFU property to a golf course site, which is also an allowed use in the EFU zone. The applicant's request for the board to review the alternatives for the location of the recycled water pipeline are consistent with ORS 215.283. I think what's important here is to note that a golf course is unauthorized, isn't allowed use in an EFU zone, and the pipeline is a permitted use under this section. As noted in the staff report, the applicant complies with the zoning regulations regarding the processing of this application. There's quite a number of them. I'm not going to go through them. And the alternatives analysis and the ORS requirements for local authorization of the proposed recycled water pipeline and its ancillary facilities. Your staff is recommending that the board uphold the appeal and approve the alternatives analysis proposed by the applicant. Direction should be provided by the board after you have your discussion, after you have heard all public testimony as to what you wish to do, and once you've come to a consensus, we will be seeking direction from you so that we can prepare a final order. We would propose to bring that back to you no later than January 31. At the writing of this report, that was the date that we were recommending. We have received some requests here for continuances beyond that potentially, so I think during the discussion, we can go over that a little bit. So, that's all I have at this point. If you have any questions, I'm going to sit over there, and I have this microphone.
So, the important question that we're bringing forth today is, are we going to allow DEQ to determine whether these possible routes are okay for the irrigation pipes? Is that...
Well, that's kind of how it would...
Bottom line?
That's kind of how it would fall out. DEQ is looking to the board to look at this analysis and say, "Yes, you've completed this analysis adequately." And John has comments as well.
Thanks, Commissioner. Just to try to go with the language of the statute, the applicant has submitted for a permit to DEQ to what's called land apply, the treated water to the golf course property. And DEQ says, "You need to have the local government take public testimony," and what actually is supposed to happen is, they've proposed either one of these, and I think Carolyn is, the planning director, has mentioned alternative routes, but I think it's just alternatives besides just the route.
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, so it's alternatives to the application to land apply, treated biosolids to property out there. And then what happens is, the applicant submits their proposals, and actually, the public is supposed to identify alternatives, and the applicant is supposed to respond to those, and then you're supposed to decide, has the applicant adequately responded to those? If, in your opinion, the applicant has adequately responded, then you just say, "They've adequately responded," and then you submit that report to the DEQ. And I think the applicant's agent can probably do a better job of fine tuning that, but essentially, that's how the statute reads. The purpose of here, what it says is, it says, "An applicant to the DEQ shall explain in writing how alternatives identified in public comments on the land use decision were considered, and if the alternatives are not used, explain in writing the reasons for not using the alternatives." The applicant, which means the golf course folks here, the applicant must consider only those alternatives that are identified with, so the public has the duty to identify for you alternatives other than these here.
So, these two are the ones that are proposed by the golf course?
Yes.
Correct. And so, really, the golf course will explain its proposal, and then the public will say why different alternatives should be used. This is a statute that we're here, that we've been directed by the DEQ to apply. And it says, "A land use decision relating to the land application may not be reversed or remanded under this subsection unless the applicant failed to consider publicly identified alternative." I included the word "publicly," but it says, "Identify alternatives or explain in writing the reasons for not using the alternative." So, really, the applicant puts on their application, and then it's really opened up to the public for the public to come in and say, "Here's alternatives they need to consider," and then the applicant has to give responses to those. And it says, "The applicant must explain, you know, why that they considered alternatives and what was done." And you have to decide if they've considered those alternatives adequately. That's my understanding of the statute, and again, it sounded a little different from what Carolyn was saying, and I'm not trying to confuse things, I was actually trying to simplify it, but we'll let the applicant talk to it as well.
Well, actually, I think I pointed that out when I mentioned that we had new comments from the public that we'd not had a chance to review, which was why our recommendation was to go to January 31. If there are new comments and ideas that have come up as alternatives, the applicant is obliged to evaluate those in writing, and we'd have to look at the timing for that to happen so that you could sufficiently take an action with their evaluation.
So, all of these emails and so forth are theoretically public alternatives to...
We don't know that. I haven't read them all.
Well, no.
I'm going to sift through them as you begin your deliberations, and I'm guessing that you'll probably hear from some people too, but...
Okay.
And the applicant, I don't know that they've been given the latest batch of these, but we can get them.
Commissioner Huxley?
But anything received, this is a question, up to right now, basically, is to be considered or must be considered by the applicant? Is that correct?
Yes.
Anything that's received, you know, prior to the close of the public hearing, and conceivably, if there's been a request for continuation, if you could close a public hearing, leave the record open, additional matters could come in. If the record is left open, then the applicant would have an additional amount of time to respond to those. And again, I think the applicant's attorney can walk us through some of that, and we can fine tune it, but I think you could hear from them, but essentially, there's a possibility for additional information to come in even after we close the public hearing, that the applicant is going to be responsible for considering and responding to this board about. So, there's, I think we're going to be going beyond today, but the bulk of our work will be today.
Okay, so we're going to move on to accept testimony from parties who are in favor of the application. So, I guess if you raise your hand and come up to the mics and...
You normally start with the applicant, Madam Chair.
The applicant, okay. That wasn't here, but we'll have the applicant.
That's customary, anyway.
I've never done one of these, so...
You're already an expert. Commissioners, yeah. I'm Bill Close, and I'm representing the applicant today. It's a pleasure to be here. Is that a little bit better? Okay. I'm going to do this backwards, since we have most recently been talking with staff about process. Maybe I could start with process, then move on to the nuts and bolts. I think staff summarized it accurately, the safe, cautious. We want to do this correctly. We don't necessarily, we want to do it quickly. We want to do it safely, so fast is not always better. Staff correctly noted that you got two packets of information in today. One has already been passed on to us. It's from the attorney for the opponents, Sean Malone, who generates a lot of work for me in Lane County. And then apparently, there were some other letters that came in as well.
Yes, they're right here.
And I haven't seen those yet, and that's fine. We'll get all that. There's been a request by Mr. Malone, asking for keeping, asking to keep the record open for 14 days. That's a reasonable request. There's some language in the code that could be read to say he has an absolute right to that. So, I think the cautious thing to do is to keep the record open for 14 days for anyone to submit any evidence they want on any issue. So, that would mean 14 days, a lot more information could come in. Some of it could be repetitive, some of it could be new, we don't know. And then, keep the record open for another seven days to allow everybody to respond with evidence to what came in in the first 14 days. So, that means everybody's had a chance to put in new evidence, and everybody's had a chance to respond to the new evidence that's... So, that's the 14 first, and then seven. No new evidence, it's just discussion and argument, or proposed findings or contributions to proposed findings based on evidence that's already in the record. So, that would be a fairly traditional and safe and cautious way to handle this. So, I just want to throw that out to you as an initial procedural point, and then shift gears and talk about the merits. Four months ago, I never would have thought we would be here with all of these issues in front of you, because the application we initially filed with the county was about, was an application for just about the simplest thing you could ask the county to do. A decision by the county recognizing that we had addressed alternative locations for this use, a very general proceeding, which would then give us the right to have DEQ do the technical analysis on what we want to do, which is to recycle wastewater to productive use. They're the technicians on this application, you're the generalists. So, things were going along swimmingly until they went a little bit sideways at the planning commission. At the planning commission, things got more complex. Planning commission injected some new issues into the proceeding and then added its own gloss on what the law is, and as a result of that, they denied our application.
Right, and there's, we're, we are in a de novo hearing, and a lot of people have asked what that means, and it means afresh and anew. The only prohibition in our code and this de novo hearing is that we don't give deference to the planning commission, but our code also says that we do not consider the decision of the lower body. So, I just really want to caution the board on too much emphasis on what the planning commission did or didn't do. I think just looking at the application anew is really appropriate.
And I agree with that comment by your counsel. But everything the planning commission did is in the record before you, so that means we have to deal with it. So, the wrinkles we encountered at the planning commission were really, were really two. The first was touched on by staff, and that is, the planning commission took the notion that this request that was placed before the county could only be granted for a use that had an active valid permit from the county, that is, a golf course, a live and well permit. That's really not what the statute requires. The statute only asks whether the use that the water is requested to be put to is a use that can be permitted or is allowed in this zone. So, the answer is quite simple. Golf courses are allowed, therefore, an applicant's entitled to come to the county and ask permission to put recycled wastewater toward that use. The way the statute's correctly written, you don't have to have an active valid permit to go develop a golf course. You don't have to have a golf course at all. You could go get one in the future. So, there's really a separation between the use that's potential, that can be made in the EFU zone and the use you're asking for, which is applying recycled water. So, our view of the statute is consistent with staff's view, and that is, it's all kind of theoretical. The planning commission then took a next step and said, "Well, we think that your golf course permit is invalid because you didn't ask to have that permit extended during the first year that was issued, as required by condition on your golf course approval." And so, they kind of connected those dots, then, and they said, "Because we think you don't have an active land use approval to do the golf course because you didn't ask to have the original approval extended, you're not entitled to this new application to get the county's blessing to apply the recycled wastewater." So, that meant that all of a sudden, the question of whether or not the county's land use approval for the golf course is still valid was squarely on the table, and so that's a much bigger question. And we made our case to the planning commission that it was alive and well. Staff made its case to the planning commission that the golf course approval was alive and well, and the reason for that is because the golf course... And the reason for that is because the golf course development actually commenced during the first year. That is, there was development activity related to the golf course. And once that happens, you don't need to go extend the approval for the golf course. You've already got it going in the ground. So that's a very basic question, and I think that's probably the most important question you'll have to address in your decision. We presented evidence to the Planning Commission of work that was done in the golf course, monies that were spent, work that was accomplished, and we've really embellished that a bit in the record before you, and that's all in front of you in the way of, in way of expenses that are documented, pictures of work that's been done, and so on. Generally speaking, that work has consisted of doing a lot of earth moving and vegetation removal that was required to be done as part of the golf course approval, and related expenses for equipment and labor and such, and also well development. And it's documented in detail in the record, and we don't have to slog through it here. But our major point is that because there was development activity during the first year, that original land use approval is alive and well, and there's no need to come back to the county and ask, you know, year by year, to extend the original land use approval. I'm not sure what the opponents think is required in the way of continuing to get extensions of the original land use approval. They may think that you need to keep extending this land use approval for the golf course on a yearly basis until the first golf ball is hit off the first tee a couple years down the road. I don't know. But I think the answer is a lot simpler than that. When you initiate development activity, which we've done here, you've got the use going in the ground, and you no longer have to extend the land use permit. So that's a little more than I needed to say on that. But that is, that's sort of the bigger issue that's consumed the smaller proceeding about wastewater. And so I think staff materials, staff reports concur in our view of that, and we look forward to you addressing that issue head-on in your, in your final order. So, and I took a quick glance at, in all my proceedings in Lane County. He shows up at the hearing and puts that stuff in. So today, he submitted it three hours early, which is courteous. And I made a quick trip through all those materials. There's really nothing new in there that we haven't seen before. There is an allegation that we've been out there destroying wetlands. There's no, he's not pointing to wetlands that we've destroyed. He's just saying, "Look at all those pictures you submitted and evidence in support of your having started actual golf course construction. You're filling wetlands." Well, in fact, we are not. It would be nice if he would point out the wetlands he thought were a filling. But in fact, the work that's been done out there has been at the direction of the applicant's wetland consultant in the way of removing gorse, which is not a wetland plant. So, I mean, that's the generalized level of allegation that we see in these materials. The other item that struck me in today's materials from Mr. Malone is a short sentence saying, "We failed to consider all of the alternatives." Reasonable thing to say. What alternatives have we failed to consider? If they're serious about an alleged failing on our part in that respect, then I would expect that sometime in the next 14 days, they would specify another alternative with sufficient specificity that we can respond to it. And then we can, of course, respond to it in our, in our seven-day schedule. So that's really the big picture on speaking a little bit longer than I intended to. But if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. And our developer teams here, and they, of course, are much more familiar with the facts than I am.
Anybody have any questions?
Okay.
No questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you reserve time for rebuttal?
Thank you, if I need them.
Okay, next, we'll accept testimony from parties who are in favor of the application. Do we have anybody here who?
There's one who's in favor, I'm not sure.
These are for the ones in favor. Mr. Baugh? Yes.
Commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity to address this. Purely looking at it as an economic standpoint.
Can we get your name?
Sorry, Samuel Baugh, with South Coast Development Council.
Thank you.
Strictly looking at it from an economical, economic development standpoint, does a $30 million investment in this community make sense? Yes, it does. Does ancillary businesses to help a golf course grow, does that make sense? Yes, it does. Will this opportunity increase the economy of this county? Absolutely it will. Will it encourage more visitation to the area? I think this is a fantastic idea, and we have to be able to let this happen. It seems like there are some people that are saying, "The golf course is a great idea, but we don't care what they do with their wastewater. They just want it left as wastewater instead of this recycling alternative." And so I would strongly recommend that you, you think through what is, what is going on and, you know, grant their application.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other testimony in favor? Please state your name. Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, my name is Eric Oberbeck, and I live in Sixes, Oregon, North County. I just kind of piecemeal the DEQ ordinance notwithstanding, which still doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. You have to consider alternative routes. I was, I am an active geologist in this area, and I was asked by Studsner to review the preferred route there. For your thought process, I see no geologic issues, no stability issues for that as far as, as far as that being the primary route for the effluent line to the north. It has not been stated yet today, but the, what the applicants are proposing to do is to take wastewater effluent and use that to irrigate the golf course. The golf course becomes a huge bioswale, which has been proven to be effective in cleaning and neutralizing contaminants such as pathogens and a variety of other things. And that, in my estimation, is a, is much more beneficial and much a better solution than just dumping it into the ocean, which is what we're doing now. So I, I recommend, and I think that the applicant's plan is a good one. And then finally, as far as the ultimate decision as to whether to continue the conditional use application that you granted the applicants and which was upheld in 2016 by Luba, I think it sets a dangerous precedent for the county to issue a permit, a capital-intensive permit such as this, and then to pull that permit for no real substantial reason. I think that that sends a message to other potential future developers. So I encourage you to uphold the conditional use permit. Thank you.
Thank you. We had another, Mr. King? These are people in favor. They're still doing the favor ones.
Carl King in Sika Beach. As I said earlier today, I've spent several decades of my life dealing with land use issues. But even longer than that, I dealt with sewer treatment issues. When I moved to a coastal town 50 years ago on the other coast, none of the sewer effluent in that town was treated at all. Individual property owners and the municipality had little outfalls, some of them within hundreds of feet of the public beaches. And over the next 40-some years, I watched the requirements grow and grow and grow. First, it was a regional treatment plant with primary treatment, and then there was secondary treatment. And then the key, I think, for this, the outfalls from that plant had to be extended further and further and further offshore. Boston Harbor is now swimmable because millions and millions of dollars were spent extending the outfall pipe in building a new treatment plant. There is, I can't point to the specific section of your zoning ordinance, but my memory is, it is typical of all zoning ordinances. It says that when you consider a permit application, you take into account the public interest. And I can't think of anything that could be more in the public interest of the people who pay for sewer treatment in Port Orford than providing a means of disposing of their effluent, their treated wastewater, that doesn't put it into an area where some government, whether it's the state or the federal, someday is going to knock on their door and require them to spend millions of dollars to get it further away. And I can't believe, given how important the fisheries are in this state, that you would not want to take this stuff out of the ocean and put it on the golf course. So I strongly support this, this appeal, and think, to me, it's a no-brainer. You gotta let them do it. Thank you.
Thank you. I think there was another, yes.
Commissioners, I'm Dave, I'm Dave Bassett, a registered professional engineer. I've lived in Port Orford since '05, but I bought property there in '95, and I watched the El Nino storms take away the dune septic leach field that the city used to use in '96 and '07. So those El Nino storms took away not only the outfall of Garrison Lake that I was quite involved in restoring, which is now working rather well, but I also watched the installation of the underground tube that took the wastewater treatment plant out into the ocean. I'm now aware, as a port commissioner, that that's not such a great idea. It's not such a good thing for the marine environment that we hoped it might be. So I sent you an email through Carolyn that says, "Please, look at this as a public safety alternative. The city has to have some Plan B for taking their wastewater elsewhere. This is the best one that we can possibly, it's a gift." Thank you.
Thank you. Any other in favor? Yes. State your name, please.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name's Chris Hawthorne. I am a long-term resident of Curry County in Port Orford. I'm a business owner in Port Orford, and of course, I'm in favor of the golf course. But more importantly, I feel that this, this use of our treated effluent is a gift to the city of Port Orford, and I would really encourage you to facilitate that happenings because we need it. As a former port commissioner, I understand we, for so many reasons, we need an alternative to pumping it directly into the ocean. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other in favor?
Commissioners, my name is Roger Meter, general manager for Kuz Curry Electric Co-op. Just to let you know, there's, we've looked at all the engineering, we've done the engineering for this facility. It literally has no impact at all to the plant in Port Orford. We would be very interested, potentially at whatever route is selected, potentially looking to see if, once that trench is open, if we could maybe bury some of our overhead lines. One of the, excuse me, one of the expenses is opening a ditch to bury power lines. And so if I could wave a wand and bury our entire system up and down the coast, that would be wonderful, but I don't have $5 billion, nor do the ratepayers. But again, we're very much in support of the project. I happen to live in Banden, and the economy the Banden Dunes brings to the city of Banden is incredible. The restaurants, the grocery stores, the gas stations, it's just, you see that Banden Dunes logo on people everywhere. So again, I just encourage, encourage the project to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other in favor?
My name is Daryl Robinson. I live in Sixes, and I've been living in the county here for probably longer than some people have been alive here, and the economy back then was, oh, not the case. I'll take it back, I apologize. But the economy in, in Port Orford is really in dire straits now compared to what it was 50 years ago. And it really needs some economic development. There's a lot of things going on there that would create jobs, and it'd be so wonderful. Also, the invasive species of the gorse. Gorse is a real havoc in this county, and it would also eliminate a bunch of that. I see it as a win-win situation for both the city, as well as the residents, and as well as the economic development that would create in Curry County, especially in Port Orford.
Thank you. Any other people in favor? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Julie Hawthorne. I live in Sixes, and I've been there for 45 years in Curry County. And it just sounds like a win-win, obvious win-win to take care of the effluent properly rather than dumping it into our fishery waters and the economic boost to North County that we need so badly. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other people that want to speak in favor? Yes, come on up.
Thank you. My name's Jim Haley. I'm, I'm the guy who started all this stuff. Sorry about that.
Way to go.
So, so go back three or four years ago when we first started this process, and we, we looked at options not unlike this pipeline for irrigation water. And there's several different waters available. There's winter water out of the Elk River that's available. There's, we drilled two wells that you'll see in the testimony. Jim Mack from the Banden well, and he figures there was about 450 gallons emitted in those wells. So we had an option to apply for a water right for those wells. And then Troy Russell, our project manager, came to me and said, "City of Port Orford only has one outfall, and it failed in '96 or '97, and they currently have an ocean outfall." And then, so I started investigating that, and became very aware that the treated effluent, the big thing that the treatment doesn't do is take out the pharmaceuticals. So the pharmaceutical goes into your body, and there's trace amounts that go out, and then it goes into the ocean. And that affects the shellfish, their ability to hide and, and, so, so we had a decision to make. We're going to go for the groundwater, or we're going to go for the winter water out of the Elk, or we're going to ask Port Orford for the treated effluent? Port Orford's already passed a change in ordinance to their facilities plan to allow for a secondary outfall. They've also approved a pipeline and a pump station to make that water available to us. So I'm asking you to approve our primary and secondary route and, and let us move ahead. So thank you very much, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you.
Yep.
Do we have any other people in favor of this proposition? Come on up. Young lady, we have very many of those around.
Hi, my name is Ashley Hall. I was raised in Port Orford. My family owns a small business in the town. I currently attend SWAC right now, and after I go to university and work professionally, probably in the city for a few years, I plan on coming back here because it's my home, you know? But I think that this is a great opportunity for our community to grow and give, like, economic opportunity to kids who are my age and in their early twenties right now. I mean, it gives us opportunity, it gives us industry, it gives us jobs, it gives us a reason to stay in the county instead of move away like a lot of my generation has so far. So I think it would be very beneficial to our community.
Thank you. Any others in favor? Okay, we'll accept testimony from other parties now. Anybody, other parties that want to have their testimony heard? Now, this is interesting. Okay, everybody's in favor, I guess. Okay, we'll allow the parties to offer rebuttal, but there's no opposing testimony. I guess that doesn't have to happen. If requested by the board... If requested by the board, we'll continue the hearing to a date certain, no later than January 31st, so.
Mr. Huddle first.
Mr. Huddle?
Madam Chair. Oh, well, thanks. So again, and I know Commissioner Gold, you said, "It sounds like everyone's in favor." They've actually written testimony probably to the contrary, so don't forget that you'll need to review that before making a decision. But also, it was something, I just want to go back to when Bill Close began the presentation for the applicant. We do have a request for a 14-day, keeping the record open for 14 days. I'd like to actually, Carolyn, do you have the actual language of Mr. Malone's? Was it to keep the record open or was it to continue the hearing or is it?
I emailed it.
I know, I just wondered if you had it handy.
Right, no, I'm sorry.
I'm scrambling around here.
Is that part of this?
Actually, it is. It's, yeah. It's the first page after the list of people. It says, "Please note that ORCA has asked that the record remain open for 14 days."
Okay, good. So the record remain open.
Right, there it is.
And then the other thing that Bill Close was talking about is that, and why, in your language that we gave you to announce to the audience today, was that normally our code would allow an automatic extension to 14 days. There's a certain thing called the 150-day rule for applications outside of our growth boundary where a final decision has to be made in 150 days. And because of the time taken since this application was submitted, we may not have 14 days, but the applicant's agent said that a appropriate thing to do, and the applicant has the control of whether to extend that or not, and it sounds like he did. And we'll probably just ask him to come back up and really confirm that. I'm getting a thumbs up. So what, what, bottom line, it sounds like what the next step would be is to close the public hearing. There has been a request to keep the record open for 14 days. What that means is there will be 14 days for people to submit additional argument and evidence. And then there's seven days to respond to that for everyone and then a final seven days. So we're talking 28 days now and the applicant gets basically closing argument on that. And Mr. Close is here to kind of walk you through that a little bit.
I just want to confirm in the flesh that we'll give you that additional time.
Thank you, on the record.
Because we don't have any procedural follow-ups and it's quite possible that we won't need our full seven days for the final argument. We could combine that with our proposed findings in order and things like that.
Exactly, right. Very good. Okay. So at this time, I think the, the recommendation would be really to continue this matter to a date certain, close the, close the public hearing, leave the record open for 14 days and then seven, and then seven final for the applicant and bring it back here in 28 days for the board to act on, make a decision.
Okay.
Carolyn, do you have thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think it would be helpful to identify the dates. 14 days would be the 31st, seven days after that would be...
Hold on, hold on. Carolyn, do you want to?
14, well, I don't have a calendar in front of me, but I know, I know 14 days from today is the 31st.
Yep.
Right?
So, so the record, the, so Commissioner Gold, I believe you can close the public hearing. There's no one else here to speak for or against at this meeting.
Okay.
So you can close the public hearing.
Public hearing is closed now.
Now, we will leave the record open for additional argument and testimony until January 31st, 2018.
And I would...
Do we need a motion to that effect?
Hold on a second.
I would just specify a time since this offer comes in via email, so I would say 5:00 PM.
Sure.
5:00 PM?
5:00 PM, January 31st, 2018. And I think what we're doing here, Commissioner Gold, is saying all these things and then you'll say, "Is there a motion to that effect?" And someone will hopefully say, "So moved," and then we'll get it out there.
Good, you get it straight and then we'll say, "So moved."
All right, good. And then, so then after the 31st, there would be seven additional days for people to respond to whatever comes in in the next two weeks. And that would be February 7th at 5:00 PM. And that's...
Two weeks or one week?
That's one week.
That's one week. It's, it's 14 and 7 and 7.
Yeah, I thought you said two, that's the reason I...
Thanks, Commissioner. I just, I did mean one. If I said two, I meant seven additional days. This is sometimes called loosely the 7-7-7 rule or 7, or the 14-7-7, but regardless, so on, on February 7th is everyone's, everyone's opportunity to respond to whatever comes in between now and the 31st. And then on February 14th, the board would hold a special meeting because it's, that would be the final day for only the applicant to make their essentially closing arguments to the board. And so that would then be when the board would have all of the evidence and testimony and documentation synthesized into a final document that you could, that would summarize everything you've seen with arguments both ways. And then the board would make a decision on the 14th, a preliminary decision to approve or deny the application.
Would you, when you say preliminary?
Well, it could be the final. It could, but it could be either the preliminary or the final depending on how much came in and what more needs to be done. But at least a decision would be made on the 14th of February. And we would likely have another special meeting and that would occur perhaps at 2:30 again, something like that. Carolyn, do you have, what, what are your?
I guess my thought is, yeah, I agree with you. I think you should set a specific time. I guess I'm also wondering too, if the board can have a discussion at this time on, on all of, that they've heard and, and express any thoughts they may have.
Or if you have any questions with staff.
We're not trying to rush you here. We're just trying to nail down...
Yeah, if there's anything you've heard today. I would also, for, you have heard some things about economics and whatnot, you know, like it would be good for the general economy. I don't know that those kind of comments are specific to the statutory criterion for land application of biosolids to land in an EFU zone. So I would just try to remind the board to make your decision based on the criteria and the statutes that the planning director have put in the staff report, so.
Never would take that into consideration.
Okay, thanks, Commissioner. I know.
I did have one other question as well. The applicant's representative, Mr. Close, talked about identifying the life of this use permit. And if, I'd like to ask him if, if you are asking the board to do that within the context of their final order?
I think so because the planning commission tied, it's, it's part and parcel of the planning commission decision.
And it's, it's also arguments made by Mr. Malone.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
I think more importantly...
No, it's now a bundle. Your final decision's really a bundle. You know, one is on the DEQ permit and then the other is on the, related to that, the continued validity of the original CUP.
I guess then I would ask if there are things that you would like staff to do in preparation for these next steps, information that you would like to see?
I'd kind of like to see both sides of the issue in a very succinct manner rather than...
Couple hundred pages?
Yes, so how many pages do we?
Maybe, maybe that's...
Like a summary?
Yeah, a summary, yeah.
Legal summary of both pro and con?
Right, right.
Well, I don't want to speak for Counselor Huddle, but...
Is that...
Well, yes, and I think a, a legal summary of both pro and con have been put forward by the applicant and by the opponent. So in other words, if you receive something today from ORCA, Sean Malone, who talks about why you shouldn't consider the application for the effluent as well as why the original application has expired. And then from Mr. Close earlier, and it's in your packet here, and they're supporting documents. If I could just, if you have a note, I could point you to where I think it exists in the, you have your special meeting, you had packet one and then packet 2A. I think 2A is primarily from the applicant. And I think on page 15 of 2A is their original application outlining things. And then you get into and you heard them talk about how they've done development and what that means with respect to the application, whether it expired or not. And that's found in 2A on pages 56, 57 through, looks like 70. So there's 20 some odd pages there. And then again, Mr. Close on page 75 of packet 2A has done the legal arguments in support of the application being, for lack of a better term, vested or, or just that they've, under our code, complied with our code, that they've commenced development.
Well, we can pull those pertinent sections for you. So you don't have to try to plug them out. They're, they're pretty, yeah.
I guess I'm just kind of linear. I like...
Sure.
To see things in a real succinct, none of the legalese stuff.
All right.
Commissioner, boys?
I'm just wondering, I assume then there's no way we can take a position today to automatically extend the, the permit? So it's not hanging over there ahead of, you know, the, the original one-year permit?
You, you cannot because someone has asked for the record to be kept open, so in theory, more information would come in and you're supposed to consider all the information to make your decision, so.
Thank you.
So now I'm looking, does anybody have any other discussion items? So I'm looking for a motion that, that talks about what, what Counselor Huddle said.
To keep, so it'd be to keep the record open for 14 days until 5:00 PM on January 31st and then to allow all parties to rebut any additional and new evidence and argument by February 7th and 5:00 PM and then to reset this matter for board consideration to allow and consider the final rebuttal or surrebuttal, whatever phraseology we're getting into there, by February 14th at a 2:30 meeting. Is that clear enough?
I think it is. I, I have one question.
All right.
It's just because I, is there any timeframe in the zoning code or in the ORS by which we can say the testimony needs to be in for the board to review?
I'm sorry.
On, on, you said by 5:00 PM, so that means if something comes in at 5:01 PM, it's, we're...
It would be not considered.
The store's closed. Okay.
Yeah, and that's 5:00 PM, January 31st. Yeah, after that, nothing new.
Right, and then...
Nothing new.
Then there's, then there's ability to rebut that. So they can't, again, that's a distinction there. They can't add new things. They have to rebut something already in the record.
But, and correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding is that during that rebuttal period, it can be only people that have already by January 31st submitted something, either oral or written testimony. Because I have not done so, I could not put in my two cents worth in the sense of rebutting one or more of the prior submittals. Am I correct on that or am I wrong?
Let me take a look. I've got the ORS. This is in, this is in, I'm sorry, ladies and gentlemen, and this is Oregon Land Use Law.
Which is the most complicated in the U.S.
They have special rules for how you handle this. And I'm just going to try to get to it right now. This is...
You don't have standing. That's right.
That's why I want to listen.
So this is 197-763 and what it says here, if the hearing authority grants a continuance, the hearing shall be continued to a date, time, place certain, at least seven days. And then it just says, "An opportunity will be provided." And then the record can be left open for at least seven days for purpose. And then it says that if they leave the record open, the record shall be left open for seven days. Any participant, so yes, John hit, what you're saying there is a participant, so anyone who's already submitted. And then that's it. And last seven days is closed to all other parties. The applicant alone gets to submit the final written arguments in support of the application. So that's 197-763.
So could I get a motion for the continuance and all of the other things that were mentioned?
I would motion, then, that the public hearing has already been closed, to leave the record open until 5:00 PM, January 31st, 2018, to allow rebuttal until 5:00 PM, February 7th, 2018. And then any final comments or responses left to the applicant? And to have a board of commissioners meeting to be held at 2:30 PM on February 14th to consider and possibly make a decision, a final decision at that time.
14.
February 14th. At 2:30.
At 2:30. All of those are Wednesdays.
So do we have a...
Valentine's Day.
I was going to say, we're going to have a big harp or something.
So everybody understands the motion, correct?
Is that correct? Yep, that's, that's a good summary of the motion.
Do we have a second?
A second, Madam Chair.
Any discussion? I'll, I'll call for the question?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, this meeting's closed then. Thank you all for coming. We'll be looking forward to Valentine's Day this year.
Oh, yeah.